I took a kind of hiatus for awhile because I had to leave for the board and I came back about three months ago.
Alright, are we ready? Alright, welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Our council discussion of goals for the police department and the process for police chief recruitment. I appreciate everyone coming for this discussion tonight. We've added additional council meetings and that makes me very popular with my colleagues and the city staff. So I appreciate them coming. We've added these extra meetings, one tonight and one on June 29th, to be able to have more of a discussion and to talk about certain issues. So tonight, we're going to, at the suggestion of my colleague, council member Siemens, actually take a step back and think about what we want the goals of our police department to be. And so for a little bit tonight, we're going to talk about if we were starting from scratch, if we were just saying we're building a new department, how do we want that department to be and to talk in the affirmative about what we want from our police department? The goal of this section, when we talk about it, is that hopefully in July, the council will put together a resolution and vote on that before we go on recess in August. So that's the first topic we're going to tackle tonight. The next is to dig into the role of the community in policing here in Tacoma Park. That's why we invited many of you who have served on the chief's advisory committee to talk to us about what has worked in the past, what are some things that you can see could be different, as well as looking at other ideas for either a police commission or something else in addition or to replace the chief's advisory committee. That discussion, I imagine, we will probably just get started this evening and will be one that we will continue into the future. And then finally, we'll wrap up with a process for the police chief recruitment and look at, as we move forward, how we are going to recruit our new police chief. But before we begin that, we actually have a very special guest with us this evening. We just found out, actually late yesterday afternoon, that we have a very experienced chief visiting, from Tucson now. And I, he was able to come tonight and speak to us for a little bit before we kicked off. And I will say, it was kind of a little odd to me to get the email from Ms. Lopez saying that Mr. Chief Magnus was in town because I had literally just written down a quote from him, from his testimony, when he testified to the President Obama's 21st Century Task Force on Policing. And so I thought, well, this is, this makes a lot of sense to have him with us this evening. As way of introduction, I'll just let you know that the chief started his career in 1979 as a dispatcher. He then worked as a paramedic and then decided to switch careers to policing and he was in Lansing, Michigan for 15 years. Then in 1999, he was the chief in Fargo and he put in place a refugee liaison program there. Then I guess he was looking for the sun because in 2006, he selected, he was selected as the chief in Richmond, California. And January, he has moved on to Tucson, Arizona. And so I know the chief is just here for today and we don't expect him to stay for our entire meeting. But we thought we would kick off, hear from him, ask him some questions and then get into our agenda. And Chief, I think if we, we're going to ask you to sit next to Ms. Charcutian here so we could be on the microphone. And Kristi, we have a place for you over there. And Chief, we just started this evening, just so you know, this is our city council here. I am the mayor here in Tacoma Park. On this side of the room, we have our members of our chief advisory committee, former and current members, and two of our three captains who are switching off being the acting chief as we're looking in the recruits. So you have Captain Collington and Captain Frishkorn and our acting city manager and our wonderful city clerk. And we have Ms. Charcutian who has been helping the city particularly in dialogues with young people in the community. And then we have residents. So if you wanted to...
Well, thank you so much. It's really my, my privilege to join you tonight in a fortuitous set of circumstances. I'm in town for a meeting at the Justice Department where we're looking at what they call Sentinel events and sort of major events that happen that affect a police department and how departments can kind of look at them in a new way, working with community to reach better outcomes, whether it be an officer-involved shooting, whether it be how police perhaps handled a protest or any of a number of other things. Are there ways that maybe we could adopt some of the same strategies that have been used by the airlines or by military or by others to look more creatively at, you know, how to learn from something that doesn't go well, but at ways that can help you have a better department and a better city? So anyway, I had the, thought I'd give a try to see if I could get together with, with Kristi Lopez, who I had the privilege of working with when she was in the Civil Rights Division in Ferguson. I was, had a chance to be one of the police chiefs that worked with the team of attorneys there and also had the chance to work with the DOJ in Baltimore and Seattle and Chicago. So this was just perfect timing. She mentioned you were having this process and, and asked if I would stop by. And of course, it's, it's a pleasure because, you know, policing is a challenge and a, and a wonderful opportunity, whether you're in a city of, you know, the size of Ferguson or the size of Tacoma or the size of, you know, Baltimore, Tucson, Chicago, whatever. They're all fraught with both challenges and opportunities. And I've had a wonderful career, it's hard to believe, of 37 years in, in policing. But the last 17 or so as a chief have been terrific in their own way because they present really great opportunities to show what you can do as a team in a city. And that team, if it's, I think constituted correctly, at least in my opinion, is one that not only has to bring out the best of the police department. In other words, it's not just about the chief or the command staff. It really has to, your best team members are often those folks who are line-level patrol cops responding to calls. But it has to not only maximize their talents and their ideas, but it also has to involve really working effectively with other city departments. It's amazing how cities of any size can be super siloed when it comes right down to it and that, that's a factor. And then perhaps most importantly, with the community overall. And that's something that historically, we don't do so well in policing. We tend to like to tell community how they should be policed as opposed to listening to the community tell us what they see as their priorities and needs. And I'll tell you, in some ways, it took moving to Richmond, which is close to Oakland and shares some of the same challenges. It was one of the most violent cities in the country when I started there. And for a city of a little over 100,000, we were averaging upwards of 50 homicides a year, which is like one a week. That's staggering. And I made the assumption when I started there, and I would go to community meetings and I would start talking about ways we were going to work more effectively to reduce violence. And I still remember an older woman piping up and going, "That's not what I'm here to talk about." And she explained to me that their first and foremost concern were the thousands of abandoned cars on their streets, which they felt created an atmosphere that was not safe, that was conducive to crime. And they were frustrated because they'd been complaining about it for years and nothing had happened. And so it was a good wake-up call for me that even in this most violent neighborhood, that the number one concern these folks had were what, how the neighborhood felt on a day-to-day basis, which was less defined by the shootings and more defined by the quality of life all around them and what they experienced. And so, again, a challenge and an opportunity. I had people in the department who said, "We're never going to get all those cars towed. It's a bureaucratic nightmare. There's a reason they've been there that long." And then we had an opportunity to show, actually in pretty short order, that by accomplishing something that was entirely doable, as it turned out, we could gain an enormous amount of trust and goodwill from a community that did not have much in the police department. Now, everything in the short, I'll admit, short time I've had to, to learn about your community and your department has, has led me to believe that you really not only have a wonderful community here, but you also have a very good department. The challenge, of course, is that any police department that is content to sort of rest on its laurels and say, "You know, our job is going to be kind of to keep, hold down the fort, keep things going just as they're going." Anytime you take that, that approach, you're already behind. You're already behind the curve, much like it would be in business or in the forms of government that work well, right? If you take that approach, you're already losing ground. So I guess, the only, I don't have a lot of, you know, sort of wise words of advice or consultation for you, but what I will tell you is that I think the best police leaders, the best police chiefs are people who recognize that change is, has to be a constant in our line of work. It doesn't mean you have to turn the apple cart upside down. It doesn't mean you can't respect and build on the good things that you already have in your agency. It doesn't mean you throw away tradition or the past or you devalue people who have invested their career in your agency. But it does mean you have to constantly expose people to the possibility of what can be. And there's some very exciting things going on in our profession right now. I would say in the 30-plus years that I've been in this field, even though some people are demoralized and discouraged by what they see as things happening in Washington or other places, policing is, the great thing about American policing is that it's a local process, which means you get to define your own destiny. You really do. How, that's so cool. And you can try different things. You can experiment with different approaches. You can involve your community in different ways that are unique to you. But you get the best of all worlds when you have your police leaders looking around and seeing what is going on in the field right now. Because there's some great things that are happening and you're so close to many of them right here in the DC metro area and you have access to many really incredible police organizations ranging from, you know, I'm part of the Police Executive Research Forum, PERF, which has led the way in a lot of different policing initiatives around use of force and other kinds of things. And there's a strong research component to what PERF does. But also IACP, the International Association of Chiefs of Police is here, the Police Foundation. There are many different ways that folks can get involved. And I've heard people say, and I heard this in work I've done with other communities that are a little bit smaller, "Well, we don't, that wouldn't be the right fit. We don't have, we can't send our chief to those meetings" or "we, we don't, they don't have the time to be involved" and that sort of thing. And I would tell you, you can't afford not to have your folks involved. Because if any lesson we've learned from Ferguson, and there are plenty of other Fergusons all over this country, which I didn't have to say that, but it's true. The lesson we've learned is that nobody can take for granted that what they've got going incorporates the potential of what we can really do that's right and good in this field. And as protectors of the Constitution, which is the most important thing we do in policing, we have to be at the top of our game. We really do. So I would just encourage you to look for a chief that is going to be open to continuous learning, that's going to cultivate that idea in the department, that's not going to get just comfortable with the status quo, that's going to really take an approach towards full engagement with the community. And that doesn't just mean on their part. It's easy. I see departments all over the place where the chief, "Oh, they're a smooth-talking, you know, son of a gun." They can go out and charm the community up and down. And yet, you know, again, the lesson I learned in Richmond was meetings where I'd be told, "We really liked you, chief, and we really like some of the people you promoted at the top of the organization. But guess what? That's not who makes the traffic stop on my kid. That's not the cop that they run into when they're going to school. That's not who my brother gets pulled over by. That ain't you. That's not the experience." Alright, well, actually, a lot of those folks were really good police officers, but they also needed to understand what real community engagement looked like and what best practices meant when it came to use of force, continuing the training, the kind of things you were reading about and looking at on the President's 21st Century Task Force report. That has to be infused department-wide. So you need somebody that's going to be really willing to do that, that's not going to be afraid to take risks. And I get to say this because I'm not paid to be here. I come and go. I can, that's the one benefit, right? I can say pretty much whatever I want. But you do want a chief who's willing to take some risks. Because risks and experimentation are the only way that people are going to learn. And particularly if somebody hasn't been a chief before, they're going to make mistakes. So you've got to give people the opportunity to make mistakes and even fail sometimes, as long as they learn from them and as long as they're based on good intention. I was so lucky in my first chief's job in Fargo, North Dakota. It's not quite like the movie, although damn, it's cold there. And I must have a thing for temperature extremes because I've gone from months of below zero to now I get to go back to 120 degrees. Yikes. But I'll tell you, I was lucky because I worked for a city manager who understood that I was going to make mistakes and who helped me survive those. And his attitude was, "Let's try not to make them twice and let's try to make them right whenever we can." But he let me try new things. He encouraged me to get involved in different things. He sent me to the Harvard Senior Executives, State and Local Senior Executives Program, which was three weeks, a big deal at the time to, as a new chief, to go to a program like that in Washington. And he gave me the chance to do that. Those were all things that really helped me develop professionally. And I would just say, you know, if, if you're willing to, to give your chief that latitude and to support them as long as they're moving in the right direction with the right kinds of team and partnership and community has to be a big part of that. Not just the community, you know, that always shows up for coffee with the cop, right? Not the community that, when you're having a citizens' police academy, they're the ones who are the first to sign up. We already, I mean, yeah, that's, that's the choir. That's great. We love those folks. We've got to keep them supportive. But the real challenge is, what about the community that hates the cops? That's scared of the cops? That has historically not had good relationships with the cops? That's living in that complex where the police respond over and over and over again? That's the harder engagement, right? And so that's the kind of thing, I think, that because I know this is a diverse community, diverse in many ways, that's going to be particularly important. But it sounds like you have some great choices and the fact that you have this kind of level of community engagement and interest and that you're putting this kind of time and effort into it, kudos to you. And I, I wish you the best and happy to take a couple of questions if you have them or if you want us to say, "Okay, I think you have a plane waiting."
I think we have Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you. Do I have to turn the microphone on or...
No, you're on.
Okay. I want to be sure to be on record here. Chief Magnus, it's really an honor to have you come here today. I've followed your career for many years and it's no surprise to see you sitting at this table when we're going to have kind of an expert opinion on, let's say, non-traditional policing. And because of that, you know, you said advice just to try some of the things that are going on, but there seems to be more than that in your career. You know, you've done some very innovative things. I'm not sure you found all those in some of the research that was going on. I wonder if you could just talk a little bit more about, you know, how you, kind of what's your thinking in taking those risks and being a little bit more innovative and how we can, what we should be looking for in a new chief to, to kind of have that same spark? I mean, you're here and there's a whole lot of chiefs around this country that aren't. You're different. I hate to tell you, but you're different.
Well, look, I, I've been very fortunate to be given opportunities, but opportunity only gets you so far. You have to have, and I hope you would look for, a chief that has, you know, a chief has to, has to be the right fit with the community, with whoever their boss is. If it's the city manager, it has to be, and it has to be someone that has courage to do the right thing. Because courage to do the right thing sounds so easy. It almost seems like a cliche. And yet, it's not. There are many pressures. And I can tell you, I've experienced a broad range of them. Some of them come from within the department where there still is this sense of, you know, "We're under constant attack. We have, the world's lined up against us. You're either with us or against us, chief." And that can be very, that can be a very luring, seductive argument because when you're in a police department, that's, that becomes your world. And who amongst us doesn't want to be liked, doesn't want to be well-regarded? Police officers as a group, they're wonderful, but they have a, they tend to have a very traditional view of what leadership looks like. And that's not always, at least in my opinion, necessarily the kind of leadership that a community needs from their police chief. So you want somebody that has, I think, the courage of their convictions, that can do the right thing even when it means that they may be unpopular with some of the people that they've worked with over the course of their careers, that they've come to like as friends and care about as coworkers. It's still different when you're the chief. And you know this, for those of you who have moved into different kinds of management jobs or if you run a business or anything, it's, it's different being the person at the top. And that's a lonely place. And it's also a place where I hope, if you want them to be successful, I cannot tell you how grateful I have been for those opportunities to sit down with people that care on the council, from a chief's advisory committee, from the community, who can have frank conversations back and forth. Because some of that support system has to transition from what you've been used to inside the department to what's broader out in the community.
One, one last question, and that is, what, what can you say to the two young men to your right? Kind of lay their fears or help them to see any benefits that you might see in, in changing course from the more traditional policing that we've seen here in Tacoma Park?
Well, you know, I, I would just slightly reframe what you've asked because in many ways, and I think frankly, this is even how it's best sold within a department, because make no mistake, change has to be sold. You can impose it with questionable success. It has to be sold. And I think in many ways, I, what I try to get folks to understand is, and I think that they would be successful because it's a common theme in policing, is that we're not asking you, what we're really, I, I think the best policing incorporates in some ways, taking a step back. Because some of the most successful policing that was done in the past, even before all the technology that cops have now in their cars, all the different things that they have to keep up with, some of the best policing was done around the idea that you talk to people. You get out of the car, you talk to people, you build relationships. That's how you solve crime. That's how you build trust, is by engaging with people. And, you know, when I say you talk to people, really, maybe that's not the best choice of words because a lot of it also comes down to your ability to be a good listener. I've had to learn many times over, and I've seen it from the most successful cops I have, that someone who can show up at a meeting, who can genuinely listen, who can demonstrate empathy and concern, who's not afraid to say sometimes, "I'm sorry", something we also talked about a lot today, even in the context of Sentinel events, like how we had some powerful, powerful, a couple of speakers. One was a woman who was, you might be familiar with this case involving Ronald Cotton from North Carolina a number of years ago where she was so caught, she had been brutally assaulted and raped. And she made a point of memorizing the face of the suspect. And so when an arrest was made, she was absolutely confident through two different lineups that this was the right person. Well, it turned out 10 years after he was in prison that it wasn't the right person. And DNA evidence showed that they had in fact convicted the wrong man. And she talked to us eloquently about the power of being able to express an apology knowing that she could never apologize enough to make up for this. But him also matching her with saying, "I forgave you years ago", but hearing that from you was one of the most powerful things in my life. So the power of an apology, we heard from a chief in La Grange, Georgia, a small town. You might have seen the article about this, who, small town in Georgia that had a horrific history of some of the worst lynchings that occurred in the, during the, following the Civil War right up through the Civil Rights era. And one of the things he decided, he's, he had a woman that was in the police department taking care of some business, an African-American woman. And they were like, she was looking at the pictures on the wall of the different members of the police department and she said to a friend of hers, "They killed our people." And he heard this and he was like, "That seems like an odd thing to say. None of these people, these are all good people. I promoted most of them. What's she talking about?" And he pursued it further and learned that, of course, that sense of history, which perhaps even means little to the 22-year-old that has no concept of having been part of anything like that that works for the department, was still very much alive in, in the, for generations among families that had been part of this community and in the black community in La Grange. It was still, it could have occurred yesterday, the degree to which it carried through. And so he made the decision that he was going to apologize to that community. And he did it in a really thoughtful and eloquent way. And that's a good example of, okay, a little out of the box, some risk to that. The chief, you know, I'm sure the chief's thinking, "What am I, what are my guys going to think about this?" You know, and why? And yet, he showed real moral courage to do that and the outcome was really pretty powerful in terms of building trust because he made the point even in saying that, you know, you talk about reparations, but that would apply, that would suggest that there was ever a time where that relationship was where it should be and there wasn't, but we can change that going forward if we acknowledge the past. I only mention these things because they were both a function of a willingness to take some risk, to be able to say, "I'm sorry," something we don't do well in our field. The ability to really listen to people and hear what they're saying. the ability to really listen to people and hear what they're saying. And I think, you know, if your folks can do that, the technical aspects of being a chief, hey, I mean, I don't want to say anybody can learn, I'll put myself out of a job, you know, here, but, but I think that the technical pieces, you can learn. If you're, if you're a reasonably smart person with some common sense, you can learn how to do the technical aspects of police chieftom. The part you can't learn is demonstrating those kind of listening skills, that kind of courage, the ability to inject innovation even when it's not popular. Those are the harder pieces of it and to take some risks because you're not always going to be the popular one. The honeymoon is very short in those communities, maybe longer in a place that's nice, but still, it's usually short.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? We don't want to keep you too late tonight, but even from our chief's advisory committee or?
Yeah, we're about to engage in a search committee process. Do you have any specific advice about how to form that search committee or exactly, you touched on some of the characteristics, but what was the question that you would ask to get at a person like that?
And I'm sorry, could I just piggyback on David's question because I have a little related piece, which is making sure that the search committee works out well, but also that the materials are recruit candidates that fit the categories you described, somebody who's never been a chief, but might be a real innovator and somebody else who's a chief with lots of experience.
Right. So, you know, I, I think it's less even about, you can have somebody who's been a chief and, you know, that's, that's great on the one hand, depending on what they've done with that experience and that opportunity, but you also can have folks who have never been a chief, who you can sense that compatibility with what you're looking for and you can get, you can, I think, you know, sure, there are a million questions you can ask, but it's still about relationship and fit. There are plenty of people who will meet that technical criteria that you're looking for, but you have to decide, do they feel right for your community? Do they understand what you're looking for, where you're at now? Different communities and this is, I don't know the answer to this as it relates to Tacoma, you do though. There are some communities where, you know, the answer is, we're really, everything's good and we're, we're not just confident of that, our residents are confident of that. And then if that's the case, then okay, a chief maybe that's a little bit more status quo focused, may well be that right fit, may be what you're looking for. On the other hand, if you're even asking yourselves the question, well, hmm, do we really know? Is everything going the way it should be? Is, are we, then maybe you are looking for someone that is willing to be a little bit more of a change agent chief. That doesn't mean that you can't get that from inside the department, but it does mean, but it's harder because you have to, I mean, you really have to look. Do you, you have to ask people, are you going to be willing to take some risks? Are you going to be willing to step out of what maybe has been your comfort zone in the agency to do some different things? I think you can find that. I've seen plenty of great examples of that, so, but you have to know kind of what it is you're looking for and then I think the questions have to draw some of that, really, how would you do some of these things? And, you know, what we're, what we're doing now increasingly in our promotional process that may be relevant to you, but I've decided that instead of asking people, "What will you do when I promote you to X rank?" I've been asking them, "What have you done?" Because the best indication of somebody's future performance really is linked, like what have they done in the rank they're in now? What did they do when they were a captain or when they were a lieutenant? What were some things that they initiated? What were some projects that, that showed some risk-taking that, you know, what were some things that maybe they failed at, but that they learned from? What were some things that demonstrated compatibility with full-service community policing, with, with problem solving? I, I like to ask, "What have you done?" Because then that's when you start to get a real picture of, you know, when the best thing they can cling on to is something that, oh, well, our team did this. Okay, yeah, but you were just a member of the team. What is something you initiated? You know, and it's like, and I even opened it up to like, okay, how about more broadly? Even in life, like in the community? You know, let's say, okay, you didn't get a chance to do that much in that job, maybe under the prior chief. Tell me something you've done in the rest of your life that's an example of that, with your kids, in a school, in your church, whatever it might be. The folks that have the answer to that and it rings authentic to you, that, that tells you something. The folks that are like, hmm, that's a tough one. Yeah, well, that tells you something too. So I think you know the answers already, but that's, those are some of the things I'd, I'd think about.
Great. Yeah, Steve?
You mentioned earlier the importance, I think, of getting the police officer out of the car and talking to people. And I was wondering if you could talk more about that. It's something that I've been wanting to see in our community more of, is to, you know, how do you, how do you go about doing that? And, you know, what works, what doesn't work?
Yeah, well, part of it is that cops, the good news is, and I think these guys I'm in a bet would agree with me, that at the end of the day, cops are pragmatists. They want to do what works, right? So if they understand that the idea of getting out of the car, whether it's to get into a school, whether it's to start building some relationships with different businesses, whether it's to meet with folks in an apartment complex or in a community group, if they think there's going to be value to them, that it's going to make the job easier in terms of fighting crime, in terms of building some credibility and trust that will maybe even keep them safe in a difficult situation, if they can see value in it beyond just being the chief's sort of, oh, well, we're doing this to build goodwill, well, this is like a PR move, you know, this is what's going to make the council happy, you guys, we got to get out of the car and talk to the community, find somebody to talk to, you know? It's like, that, that's the turnoff. If they get it that there's value to this, that, that this will really help them be more effective crime fighters, be more effective problem solvers and build relationships that are going to give them credibility, maybe to succeed in their own careers, that's when it starts kicking in. So I think if, if they can see it tied into something that has real pragmatic value, not just the idea that, you know, oh, this is sort of a, this is what they, you know, they is, you know, I've learned now, they is me from this department. Can you believe they are making us do dishes? No, it's like, can you believe, that's, that's me, but they is also you. You're in the same bad camp I'm in. And cops, it's just like, they don't love that. So we can get value out of them, but they have to see that it makes sense for them, it makes them more effective, it's going to give them more job satisfaction and it's actually very doable. You don't need a ton of time. It's like working out, right? You don't need to do it all day long, 15 minutes at the right time, you start to build some real value. So I think it, with the right kind of leadership, that can be introduced as something that is really a value-added part of the equation and it really does turn into a win-win.
Laura, you want to?
I think I need to talk you into this microphone a bit. Thank you for your leadership across this country and it's an honor to have you here. I do conflict resolution work, both community conflict resolution and as well as conflict resolution between police officers and community members. And the thing I'm interested in understanding more about, and I think as we're looking at the police department in general, as well as the, the process for hiring a chief, is kind of creative ways for officer evaluation that captures the things that are important, like relationship building. So it's my understanding from the work I've done with departments that it's easy to count traffic stops and it's easy to count arrests and it's easy to count things that have been confiscated and it's harder to count relationships and problem solving. And I'm wondering if you can talk about effective and fair ways, you know, ways that are fair to officers and effective in creating the incentives for the kind of creative problem solving that's not as easy to count as the other things are.
Yeah, well, right on for that observation. I mean, that, that's the problem of course, is that it, it's always revealing to me when I come into a department and I hear about what their commitment is to full-service or community policing and then you look at what, what's actually counted or what's evaluated or even how people are promoted and you see that it's all based on things like how many traffic stops, how many, you named, you ran down the litany. Those things have a place. I'm not a, let's throw all the numbers out guy. I think there is actually value to doing traffic stops. I'm not sure, I feel like this, you know, I'm not a quota fan when it comes to writing tickets, but I think traffic stops are a good thing and I think, you know, there, there's value to doing enforcement in the right situations and right places, but we got to broaden our metrics of what we're evaluating and what we're looking for from our cops. And so the idea, but, but that also means, this comes back to police leadership because if problem solving is sort of this, okay, well, how many problems did you solve today? Really? I mean, let's face it, that, that's BS. I mean, the biggest problems are often ones that are going to take in some cases, weeks or months or even years to solve. And so what I'm more interested in is, is officers that can articulate something that they're working on in an area that they are responsible for, that shows that they're working on it in a thoughtful way. That means they have community people engaged and they can even name who, who some of them are, that they, that they have some specific benchmarks in mind for, okay, well, this is the progress we've made so far and that they have kind of a longer-term vision for dealing with it. But that, you can't just put that on, on a police officer. I mean, that means they have to have a supervisor and ultimately a chief that says, "Yeah, I get it. This is, you're not going to solve that whole situation over at that apartment complex or this problem liquor store that overs, you know, that sells to intoxicated people. That's not going to be done overnight and, and it's probably not going to be done by yourself." So, you know, what you really have to start evaluating then are, do officers have the skills and the tools and are they using them to solve different kinds of problems? And they can be crime problems, they can be neighborhood quality of life problems, they can be a range of different types of problems, but they have to go beyond just taking the calls for service. And so I think that's, you know, when you start looking at ways to track some of that, which takes more work and more investment by a first-line supervisor, by a sergeant, I mean, that's, that's harder, but then that's what makes the difference. And you know sergeants are going to hear, I bet you'll hear it in this town, just like I hear it every day in Tucson, which is, we go call to call. We're busy, we've got so many things now that are expected of us, you've added so much paperwork, there's so much bureaucracy, there's so much, we don't have time for that. No, there's always time for what you make a priority around and that's where having the right kind of leadership comes into play. Because the right leaders say, we all have a beaker at work. I draw the analogy, I say, everybody's got this beaker, right? And you fill, we fill the beaker with different things. Most of us, a lot of what goes into that beaker on a day-to-day basis is the stuff that we have a high comfort level in. Perhaps we're good at it, perhaps we like it, perhaps it's what we're most familiar with, but that's what we fill our work beaker with. Well, what I've told my people, it's not always popular, is guess what? I'll let you keep half your beaker, all right? You fill half of it up with, you like to do traffic? Fine. You like to do this kind of budgeting work? Who likes that? Not some street cop, I can tell you that. You like, whatever it is, if you like it, you get to do half of it, but as the chief, I get to fill up the other half. And so we're going to change priorities in some of the things you do, which means you can keep part of what you do and what you like, but you got to find room for my stuff. And my stuff means a different kind of community engagement, it means time for problem solving, it means time to fit some of these things in. And guess what? I think you can figure out how to make that work. And for the folk, you know, so we give everybody a chance and then there's still some people that's go, you know, I really tried, chief, I tried and I could not find a way to do your half of the work with the stuff I still had to get done. And my answer to that is simple. I'm happy to help you redesign your work. You may not like what that looks like if I have to do it. And I'm happy to have your supervisor help you with that, but you know, why do I need that person as your supervisor if I'm having to do their work for them? So there are different ways to get to the same outcome, but we can help influence what it is the cops do. And then we have to be fair about evaluating them for it and better yet, celebrating it when they're successful. Because that's the other piece, which is when you see what you like and you're going to know what it is, whether you're in the community or in the council, if you want it to continue, you got to get excited about it. You got to support that chief, you got to support those cops, you got to say, because that's the most powerful thing. The discipline tool, yeah, that's out there, but the best thing is when we say, we lift it up and say, yeah, this is what we want, this is our, we're so proud of you, our police department. That's, that's the real measure of success, I think.
I'm going to let Councilmember Smith have her last question and then move on and you're welcome to stay, but I think you also have a plane to catch, so.
Chief, I'll be quick, two questions. One, have you worked in a department that was accredited and what did you, what were the positives about accreditation in that department? That's my first question. My second question has to do with these other issues that the police department has to handle, whether it's poverty, mental health, blight in different communities. Tacoma Park doesn't have a social services department, right? Have you worked in other municipalities where that was, that department was not there, but officers in some way were able to provide the resources to the community that had these other issues? Because it's not always just about kicking down the door and I appreciate that.
Right.
You know, sometimes that needs to happen, but there are these things that are going on in these communities that we just are trying to wrap our hands around and because, you know, the way we're organized, we just don't have the resources to do it. So can you give some information, answer those two questions?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question and I guess I'd say this, you know, I always am amused by, by even police officers, but certainly by chiefs who say, God, I wish we could get back to the days where we just did police work. I, I'm sorry, I don't know what alternative world they were living in. It must be very different from the one I came up in and I've worked in large and small departments in several states and dating all the way back to, well, I already told you how long it's been, so I've outed myself there, but I mean, when I think back to the late seventies when I started, even then, the majority of the calls that we were responding to were not law enforcement calls. They were issues that involve community needs, people in crisis, whether it was mental health, whether it was somebody who was homeless, whether it was a civil matter, whatever it was, that was the majority of it. And that's the exact same way it is today, maybe even more so now. But frankly, that's always been policing. The, I mean, there's no social, there are very few social service agencies that are there at three in the morning, you know, or are there on a Friday night. It's the police. And so we can cry about that and it is frustrating and it highlights the need for better partnerships and relationship building, but ultimately, we have to have officers that know, how do you first respond to those things? How, we have to give our cops the right sort of training and for example, mental health. They should all have first aid for mental health, the basic eight-hour course that supplies them with the do's and don'ts, mostly what not to do when you're dealing with somebody who may be in mental health crisis. And as many as possible to have the 40-hour CIT training is ideal because that gives them some resources. But even more importantly, and I've used mental health as an example, but there are plenty of other areas where cops have to be good at making referrals. And a referral is not, it's not a police problem. Now, that's not a referral. A referral is knowing how to connect people up and even in some cases, do a warm handoff so that they get resources because we can't provide it all. I mean, no police agency has the resources to be the wherewithal for poverty, education failures, mental health needs. I mean, that's just never going to happen. But we can build relationships and we can train our cops so they know how to respond to those calls and how to connect people in a thoughtful way. So I think that's, that's critically important and that, one of the things I'd be interested in even from a prospective chief is, how are you going to do that? What do you, what do you know about the resources that are out there now? Where would you like to see us go in terms of building these relationships and making these connections? Because you're right, that's going to be a huge part of the job. Remind me what the first-
Accreditation.
Accreditation. Funny, we were just talking about that. So I think it has a time and a place. I, Clea- I, CALIA is the primary agency that does accreditation, and I think depending on, I don't know enough about your department to make an educated opinion on whether or not you would benefit from going through a CALIA process. I will say this, there are, CALIA's a pretty formulaic and costly approach towards reaching a set of standards within the department. There are alternative paths to get there, and they, you certainly, in this area in particular, have access to really good resources through IACP, their model policies. You have resources through PERF about looking at different standards for setting up various protocols around use of force and other things. I don't think, you know, I'm not, so I'm not saying, gee, that's a terrible idea, don't seek accreditation, but I am also saying that there are ways to get to that destination if you have some people in your department who are willing to continuously put a focus on, we gotta update these policies, we gotta update, constantly be updating our training, we need to be looking at what's out there, what are the best practices, we need to be getting help. If you have relationships, whether it's through a college or a university, that can give you some help. You have, gosh, apparently, this is like ground zero for people who've worked at the Justice Department in this community. I mean, there are people, you have a lot of knowledgeable folks here. So, I mean, I think if you don't wanna spend that kind of money and if you're thinking, okay, well, perhaps we don't need that degree of top to bottom, because it is, it does become a little bit of a cottage industry, it's not like a one-and-done kind of experience, then there are other options, but sometimes having a template that is that prescriptive can be helpful. So, I think that's something that, you know, if I was the new chief, I'd wanna look at, I'd wanna have that conversation with the manager, I'd wanna think about that as an option, but I'm just saying, I wouldn't reflexively just look at that as the panacea to reaching the standards that you wanna reach. I think it can be done in several ways.
All right. Thank you, chief, and thank you for your service.
Great, and I actually, I was remiss and I should actually probably ask our captains if they have any questions for you before you leave, not to put you guys on the spot, but just wanna make sure.
Well, I just had one. I read to me, first of all, thank you for coming today, and I just wanna say that I admire some of the courage and the things that you've done to show boldness to build unity in the community, in terms of when you stood with Black Lives Matter on the protest line. What was some of the, the pushback that you got or any backlash that you received?
Oh, there, there was plenty. And the funny thing is, it was such a, I don't know, almost organic sort of grassroots moment, not, not calculated at all. We, just to briefly put it in perspective, this was a time where communities all around us, Berkeley, Oakland, San Francisco, had been having many, many demonstrations that it ended up going very badly, a lot of, lot of conflict between police and community, a lot of property damage, a lot of violence, freeways being taken over. And our community, we heard that there was gonna be a protest, and there was some talk that, you know, they might also wanna take over the, go to the freeway and take that over. And, you know, we, we did the sorts of things that would be appropriate, which was, we had a mobile field force that we deployed, but out of sight. The community that was out there never even knew, they were there, they were ready, but they were not in view. And we just decided, my, my command staff and I talked about it, and we thought, you know, Richmond is, you know, it's a small town, even though it's 110,000 people, and we've spent a lot of time and energy getting to know this community, I mean, why don't we just go out and have some conversations with people? So, we went out to the protest, and we literally spent three hours going from person to person, having conversations. I had my captains, a couple lieutenants, and my assistant chief and I, we went out there, and we talked to people. And it was funny, because even the people, some that were coming in from other places that were determined not to engage with us, were struggling, because everybody kinda knew somebody. This is the power of relationship building. And at one point, actually, people had been out there a long time, and it was, as I recall, it was kind of a, you know, one of these cold Bay Area days. It's not that sunny there, by the way, in Richmond. And they, and my, one of my captains had this idea about, how about we order a bunch of pizzas? And she did, and they came, we had like 20 pizzas, and we just, she and the other cap, the other captain, they went up and down, and they just offered people pizza. And it was funny, 'cause, you know, we had some people that were like, you know, no, I don't talk to police. And they're like, eh, you know, maybe this one time. So, we went through this, and at one point, this woman with her little daughter came up to me, this African-American woman, and her just really cute kid came up, and she was holding a Black Lives Matter sign, and she said, could I get a picture of you? And so, with my daughter. And I said, sure. And so, we did a picture, and then she said, hey, would you, would you even consider holding this sign? And, you know, okay, for better or for worse, you don't have a lot of time, and some would argue what a wrong reflexive decision that was, but I thought, okay, well, what does the sign say? Black Lives Matter? I'm in a community that's overwhelmingly a community of color, and we're here affirming that, yes, that relationship historically has been horrible, but we're working to make it better and to change things. So, yeah, of course I would hold the sign, because they do matter, and this is important, and this is really significant to the people that are here today. And it's, 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 it's a very small way that I can go halfway in, in this relationship. Not entirely in like the chief I was telling you about in La Grange, Georgia. And so, I did it. I had no idea, you know, stupid me, and people said, how naive are you really? How long have you been in chief? What, are you a complete idiot? I guess sometimes the answer is yes. I had no idea that it was gonna go viral. And I got, I had to go back and have a conversation with many members of my department and the union, who were like, what the hell was that about? Seriously? Did you seriously do that? You know, really? And we had, and it was a source of good conversations, because I, I had to explain, and some of them bought it and some not, that, guess what? It's not a continuum. We are on this end of the continuum, it's Black Lives Matter, and on this end of the continuum, it's Police Lives Matter. Guess what? That's not the case. We ended up having some really good conversations about it. And I said, oh, and by the way, did anybody damage any property in Richmond? No. Did anybody take over a freeway? No. Did anybody yell shit at the police and, and get into confrontations? Did we have media there filming big, you know, like the media loves to film? No. Hmm. So, didn't go so bad, then? Yeah. And hey, those mobile field force guys, they all got overtime, so what are they complaining about? They were eating pizza over in their area. What, what, what's their problem? So, okay, my guys ultimately came around on it. There were some, and we respectfully disagreed. They said, you know, we don't think you should do that, and we think you shouldn't have done it in uniform. And I said, guess what? I, I appreciate your opinion, but it wasn't campaigning, wasn't supporting a candidate, it wasn't, it was engaged, this was really a form of community policing. And my, and good example also, my city manager said, what's the issue here? This is our community. This is, we are, this is what we're about. Do I have a problem with it? No, hell no. I wish I'd been out there to do it. All right. So, now, fast forward, I get encouraged to look at this job in Tucson. I very nearly did not get the job in Tucson, because the police union there said, we absolut, are we gonna have that chief? That, that communist who held that Black Lives Matter sign is our chief? Oh, hell no. They were like, we can unanimously agree that that is like our, we don't know who's applying, but we know that's the one we don't want. Anybody else will be fine. Their political miscalculation was that their city council said, oh, the police union hates this police chief? Well, that's just solidified our view that that's exactly who we wanna hire. Not exactly the way I wanted to come in the door, and trust me, I've spent the last 18 months working to build those relationships internally, which are extremely important, and we've come a long way with that. But I just mentioned, these are all examples of, you know, there's risk-taking, and I respect, you know, the response. I probably got somewhere in the vicinity of maybe 5,000 emails out of that, I would say, and, and letters. And some of them, I mean, really brought tears to my eyes. I had people who wrote me that said, I never thought I'd see that in my lifetime. And others said, you are a disgrace to this profession. Anywhere you go or do, I will remember this and oppose you till my dying breath. And I thought, you really need to get a life. But, you know, ultimately, again, you gotta do what you think is right, what makes sense in your community at the time, and I don't regret it, but I won't say there, I mean, there's consequences for every decision like that that you make, so perhaps in, I would, you know, I don't know, maybe if I thought more about it, I would've done the wrong thing. So, I guess I'm glad I did things the way they turned out.
But I imagine you build trust with the community.
Oh, yeah. No, it's solidif, I mean, look, when, I, I'll just tell you, there's a bond that I will always have my entire life with the community of Richmond. And leaving was incredibly hard. 10 years is a long time to be a police chief these days, and it was hard to leave, but yeah, that was a bond that, that solidified that. It was worth it to me. Thank you for having me.
Well, thank you. I thank you so much. We kept you longer than we promised we would, and I really appreciate it. Thanks. Great. Thank you. Safe travels home. All right. So, back to our agenda. For that, I hope folks enjoyed that and got some good information. So, now, we're gonna do, thank you, to, to step back, as I think the, the chief said in one of his comments, and spend a little time, yes?
I think the gentleman left his bag here.
Oh.
His bag or her bag?
Was that his?
Maybe Christie's.
Maybe.
You saw something, so you said something.
Yes, very nice. Thank you. Excellent. So, the first thing is just to open it up and have a conversation. I will, just, if I didn't mention it before, our goal tonight is to wrap up around 9:30. So, hopefully, we'll get to all our items on the agenda, but as we've talked about before, that this is, this is the beginning, and we're gonna have many conversations. So, and I thought it was important to take the time out, since we had the chief here to do that. So, let's start and think about what affirmatively, because lots of times, it's easier to talk about what we don't like and what we wanna change and what we haven't liked in the past, but tonight, we thought we would think about what are the goals and what do we want to affirmatively think about for our police department in the future? Anybody wanna? I can start. I've thought about this. I have a couple of things. I think going back to President Obama's task force on the 21st century policing, one of the things the report talks about is that the absence of crime is not the final goal of law enforcement. Rather, it is the promotion and protection of public safety while respecting the dignity and rights for all. So, I think affirming that, that, because I think lots of times, like when we have meetings with the community and other things, we're always talking about, how can we, you know, stop crime? And, and it's very focused on the safety aspects, which are a very important part of the job for our police department, but also reaffirming the importance of respecting of dignity and rights of all, for me, is one of the things that I would like to see us put in, and state as one of our goals. Councilmember McCollough?
Thank you. You know, this sort of spins off of that a little bit and some of the comments that Chief Magnus made tomorrow night, and I appreciate very much, the, the police have agreed to host a meeting in Ward One to deal with some of the recent public safety concerns we've had there, including around the Child Development Center. And I've been at other meetings like that before, and they're all really helpful, but I, I think what we wanna do is get to the point where we don't only have those kinds of meetings in response to a specific concern about safety. I think we should in response to specific concerns about safety, but again, and this probably gets to the size of the workforce and resources and so on, but to the extent that there could be meetings like that when there isn't a crisis, because you know how it'll go in a meeting like that, people can, can be tense and it can be hard to really build the kind of long-term type of relationship as opposed to just addressing the short-term question of what can be done to quote-unquote fix this particular outbreak. And so, I don't know what the answer to that is, but something where, on a, you know, round-robin kind of basis, the police are just meeting, and I'm not saying that it doesn't happen now, but making that, making that a much bigger part of what we do.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes? Councilmember Smith?
I, I would like to say that I would like to see true community policing. What I've experienced at Essex House through the ACE Academy, for those that do not know, it's an after-school program through Montgomery Collaboration Council, and it's a 21st century education grant. And the police department has, through Captain Collington, has made a very strong effort to spend time with those young people, so that when we have events in the city, those young people have no problem coming up to Captain Collington and other officers that have gone to the ACE Academy have had no problem talking to them. I want to see whether or not you live on Houston Avenue or Edinburgh, that people have the same type of relationship with the police department. They're not afraid to talk to the officers. They even might consider becoming a police officer one day in their life, once they grow up. That is something that I think we're missing in our community, but we can achieve this goal. And if we believe in community police, and I think many on the council do, if we put the resources into making sure that the chief that we hire believes in that same type of philosophy, I think that this will be an incredible community that will be the standard for many municipalities in the country.
Thank you. And I also say that I think when the chief was talking about his example of the abandoned cars, there was also thinking about, and putting as one of our goals, that the police officers are seen as working in concert with other community stakeholders to create an economically and socially stable neighborhood. So, looking at that, and I thought the example that the chief gave of the abandoned cars and thinking about the whole neighborhood and what the issues are facing it was a good example of that. Yeah, Councilmember Magnus?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's important when we talk about community policing, I mean, we have talked for many years about, we want community policing, we have community policing, but we've never defined what community policing means to us here in Tacoma Park. And I think we need to be clear that many of what we've seen of the enactments of community policing in Tacoma Park have been one or two officers, you know, going to the school and talking to kids, going to public, uh, community meetings. Maybe, and other times, we've had patrol officers stopping by community meetings, but from what I hear from my colleagues on the council and from community members, that we're really looking for is a police department, where all members of the police department engage with the community in positive ways to understand what the issues are in the community and to just have those relationships that Chief Magnus was talking about tonight.
Councilmember Mael?
And just adding to what my colleagues say, which I agree with, I suppose it goes without saying, but we've had downward trends in crime and wanting that to continue, but the part that's been missing is understanding the benchmarks to which we might compare ourselves as a community, and I don't feel like we've ever had that. And so, I interact with a lot of residents who, although crime in, across the board, violent, non-violent, is significantly down over, let's say, a decade, they feel violent, nonviolent, is significantly down over, let's say, a decade, they feel less safe. They feel less safe because your wise updates come out all the time, it's even on listserv, or because there's something on their block, which doesn't reflect the entire neighborhood, or the entire ward, or the entire city. So that's just a, something I, maybe it goes without saying, but I just wanted to say, that's a downward trend, but also this benchmark piece. And the other, and our guest used a term that really struck a chord with me, which is sentinel events. And so, with regard to Councilmember Stevens' comments about community policing, it's nimble and creative when it comes to sort of moments in the community. And I think of things like, one of our residents was killed in a terrorist attack in Mali, and so it was a community gathering opportunity for distant violence. There was the whole period of time when the country was going through the issues with police and minority communities, Ferguson and other places, and what were we doing in those moments to build community? There has been a murder in Ward Two, and then a murder-suicide in Ward Two. What happens in events like that, where you've got a specific crime to react to? So in addition to what Councilmember Kovar said, you know, how do we respond? How do we anticipate? And how, how do we do so in ways that show flexibility, creativity? And that's, that's something that I really wanna see. I'm sorry, one more.
Yeah, go ahead.
One more comment, which is, it's not just our police department. So we need our forty-plus police officers to be effective when they're out interacting with the community, but that effectiveness and engagement needs to be matched by our Public Works Department, our Housing and Community Development Department. And we have progress to make in all those areas. So we'd support not to put the whole burden on the department. This needs to be a fair part of the burden.
Great. Councilmember Stevens?
I could keep going along.
I know you.
You know, we talk about law enforcement, and, but one of the things that I would like to see a bigger emphasis on, from our police department, is crime prevention. And that comes in many different forms. Part of it is engagement with the community, understanding what the issues are in particular neighborhoods, the use of environmental changes for crime prevention, recognizing youth who are maybe strained from the straight and narrow. And this gets to the next point, which is, and again, Chief Magnus talked about it, is building the relationships with the other resources that are available, so that if, if and when the police see a family in distress, or a young person in, that's strained away from doing the right things, that they start to, the police start to introduce the family or the individuals to other resources in the city government, or outside the city government, that can try to address that problem before it becomes a criminal situation.
Councilmember Crutchey?
Thanks, Mayor. And I wanna apologize to everybody for eating. I just broke my fast, and I'll continue nibbling as we're sitting here. You know, I think everything my colleagues have raised is important, but to me, engagement, particularly with youth, and at-risk youth, is important. I will say, just anecdotally, from my own experience growing up in Philadelphia, I never had a positive experience with the police when I was a young person. And maybe it was because I was a young person of color, or maybe it was because I was a knucklehead at times, maybe it was a combination of both, and maybe also was because the only time I saw police was when something went wrong, and not when things were going fine, and they were just on a first-name basis with me. When I moved outside of Philadelphia, I saw real community policing, where police officers knew the kids in the community by their first names, and engaged them. And now, as a prosecutor, as somebody who works with police officers on a daily basis, I feel like I'm caught in the middle of Black Lives Matter and Blue Lives Matter, because I see both sides of the issue. And I see how most police officers spend, risk their lives to do very important work in the community. So there has to be, there's some disconnect there. I didn't grow up in some unique environment. I think we're all a product of our own consequences and experiences, and I think if maybe police officers were engaging me, and maybe I should've done more as a youth too, but were engaging me directly as a young person, maybe those negative impressions I had of the police would not have been how I started off my life. And now, I have nothing but positive experiences with law enforcement. So there is a disconnect in our community, and across the country, I think, of this two sides of the issue of Black Lives Matter and Blue Lives Matter, and that they're somehow mutually exclusive and opposing forces, but to me, they're not. I think they're, like the chief talked about, very important lives that matter to our entire community, and we somehow get caught in the crossfire of it. So to me, engaging young people, particularly young teens, who I think are running the streets, and sometimes getting into trouble, and coming up with a plan for our police department to address that particular demographic, not based on even race or socioeconomic status, but just as a focus on youth, is something that I'd like to include in our goals for the police department to enumerate.
And turn it over to our, I'm sure you see anyone, yes, Steve.
So, one of the things that Chief Magnus said that struck me was kind of the fit with the community, and there's just sort of a lot of tacit, implicit qualities there. And so, my question is, would it be better for council to enumerate a list of goals prior to initiating formal recruitment? Or would it be better to let potential chiefs demonstrate their understanding of our community, and maybe we should let them do their homework, and show us that they're the right fit? Right? If we put out a statement, everyone who's gonna come in is gonna check every single one of those boxes, right? So, just a thought.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
I think, kinda piggybacking on what Councilmember Smith said, but even more than community policing is transparency of the police department. I know that my neighbors have said that they really appreciate getting the information they get from Kathy, the crime summaries, and the, you know, traffic enforcement summaries. I know there used to be public comstat meetings that I haven't seen in a while, but any, any way that we can have the department be more transparent, and the citizens can be more involved, and actually see what the department is doing, would be helpful.
Good. Your Councilmember Stevens?
Mayor, again, since we're talking about transparency, and it just reminds me back to a week ago, when we were talking about complaints, I think that should be on the list here, our change in the way that complaints are handled. And we talked about that last week, so I won't go into it more.
Right, and we're gonna do a separate resolution on that.
Okay. I think it fits into the policies of that we're suing. Whatever.
Okay. Well, when we draft it, if you wanna, if you, when we draft it, if you wanna include it in it, last week, we talked about doing a separate one on that, because it was so specific to complaints, but we can add it here as well. Yes, Sean?
So, I'm kind of a first principles guy. The first thing I would say is, as a resident, I would love for Tacoma Park not to need a police department. Recognize how naive that is. As a resident, I would love it if I never heard anything about the police department that we did have to have. So, but I do think it's important to think about why we need a police department, and not to forget those kind of first principles, as we look at what I see are some of the loftier goals of trying to reduce the need for that department. But I think it's very important, my time on the advisory committee, I was really struck by the absolute essential nature of the relationship with other departments in the area. And I haven't really heard anything about that. And I think that all the resources in the city are one thing, but the reality of where this city is located is, you have to have great relationships with Montgomery County, we have to have great relationships with the district, you have to have great relationships with PG County. And I think having somebody who's skilled in negotiating those kind of inter-jurisdictional things is gonna be absolutely imperative for a chief.
Great. Laura, yeah?
So, we're still doing the goals?
Yes.
The goals for like, what we would wanna see? So I think, and I don't know how this language, I'm curious, maybe from the captains in the room, but there's a lot of current writing around the idea of guardians as opposed to warriors, and I don't, perhaps the council has already had those conversations, but the idea of police as guardians, sort of of the community, as opposed to warriors fighting the community, and I think a lot of the war on drugs has sort of created the warrior mentality and approach. And so I think, when we're thinking about what we do want, it's the guardian piece that we want. I don't know how that language plays with officers, actually, I haven't had those conversations. So you all might have more to add to that. The other thing I wanted to add was, there's this conversation about what does community policing look like? In some ways, the term has become almost meaningless. And not that it's meaningless in terms of officers who are doing good, you know, good at it, but that some of the language that we've been using in some of the communities I'm working with is the community-led policing, and so really looking at, how do community members have a really meaningful role in developing police policy? And that actually puts a lot of responsibility on community members as well. So it shifts from this opportunity to show up to the council and say, "I do like this, I don't like that," to, if you have real community-led policing, then community members have to, to some extent, some of the work the chief's advisory committee has done, but there's a, there's an element of kind of joint commitment to an outcome. And so, community, people who are part of solving whatever the problem is, have to understand the police's role and perspectives, as much as the police have to understand the community's role and perspective, and then collaboratively developing solutions. And sometimes, it's done around a policing policy, and other times, it's done around a particular issue, and I think the chief talked about, you know, doing, that you can do that around, to solve the liquor store problem, or to solve the issue in this, you know, apartment building. But really meaningful collaborative problem-solving, where people sort of have equal voice in determining the outcome, community members and officers.
Mayor?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, thank you. Listening to Chief Magnus, it was terrific food for thought. I caught on to this idea of a half-filled beaker. I'd be happy with twenty percent of a beaker, because I have never really understood what we talk, what we mean, Laura, as you were saying, by community placing. In other words, who's against community placing? And is there such a thing as anti-community placing? I mean, what is the converse of that? So, and that's never been clear to me either. And so, to me, I maybe just sort of take a naive approach to the whole thing, is that community policing means the cop on the beat, the guy that's, or the woman patrol officer who's literally on the street, gets out of the car, who people know. They say, "Oh, I know that's, let's say, Officer Holmes," or somebody like that. "We've seen her around, we know, we know who she is." And then, the chief was talking about that relationship building. And it seems to me, if one, out of one hour, out of each shift, a person could figure up, an officer on the police force could say, "Well, I'm gonna spend an hour," or something like that, literally out of my patrol car, or meeting with a group of people that I've set up a meeting with ahead of time, that wouldn't take long before a huge difference would be made. One of my frustrations is, is that when people in the community get really irritated about a perceived or a real problem with regard to crime, or there's a lot of anxiety, and they say, "Well," and I say to them, to the association president, "Well, you know, we can get Chief so-and-so to come out here and have a meeting with you, and why don't we make that arrangement, and see if we can get the police to come out and meet with the community and have a talk?" Why do we have to go to all that trouble? Why isn't, why can't we turn that upside down, and make it a policy that the, that the police department has an obligation to be having, coming to the community, or notifying the chief, the neighborhood associations? Well, it's time for us to come out. We're supposed to come out and meet with you guys at least every so often, and we're, we need to talk to the community. Rather than the community sort of asking the police to come out and have a meeting some evening at somebody's house, or at the rec center, or wherever it is, it would be great if the police department would push that, and just sort of say, "Look, this is our job. We need to be out in the community. We need to have, so please arrange a range of time when Officer, or Captain so-and-so, or Lieutenant so-and-so can come out and have a chance to say hello and shake hands, and talk to you about what's, what's on everybody's mind." That, to me, would be community-oriented, would be, to me, community-oriented policing. And the other thing I would like to say is that, if we're gonna have, continue to have a chief's advisory committee, I'd like it to be a lot more effective, because in all the years that, since Chief Rucucci set it up, I've never gotten any feedback from any members of the chief's advisory committee about what goes on in those meetings. I've asked some questions to individuals, some who are arranged to have appointed, and sometimes, I've heard some negative things. "Oh, well, a lot of turnover, it's pretty much one-sided, we never know if a meeting's going to be canceled." And, you know, that's, that's fine. I'm sorry to hear that, but I'd like the chief's advisory, if we're gonna continue it, give it some mandate, that you've got a job, that you're representing not just yourselves and your own curiosity, and your own interest in educating yourself, but you have a job, a responsibility to the community, to report back to the community at large on what you're learning, so that, so that you're actually serving as a filtration device between the community at large and the, and the police department. And I think that would be a help.
Great. Well, why don't we move, yeah, you know, you-
So I'd like to jump in and respond to that. I agree a hundred percent, you know, and I think the number of the members of the committee do play that role, and I know I'm on my listserv, and I respond to things, and I take things back and forth to the committee, or I have in the past, when I've been more involved in the committee. And I know other people on the, on the board also do that. I do think that there is a certain lack of definition of the role of the police advisory board, that if there were tangible things that we could take on and be helpful with, this last week when we met, Captain Collington had, I think, a good suggestion about how we might be involved in the complaints process. You know, I think that there are tangible roles where we can be involved, so I'd be all for it, because I think it'd be a better use of my time, which I value. And then, on the broader conversation, I think this is a great conversation, and I agree completely with engagement and community policing. I just really wanna tack on to one thing that Chief Magnus said, which is, it's not just about engagement, it's about engagement with the people who are really hard to engage, because those are the people who I think are the most affected by what happens with their police department, probably. And then, just to add, I think a goal of the, our effort should be to make the police department a really good place to work. Because, you know, we need to create an environment where there's clear expectations for people, where they don't dread coming to work, and I, where there's trust in leadership, and then where people also have the flexibility to show some initiative, and to address problems. Because it's a really tough job, I think, to be a police officer, and I think we need to respond to that as well.
Thank you.
I think along that same line, the, you know, it goes back to the transparency, that a lot of, a lot of times, we complain about what we don't know about. And I use training as an example. You know, people say, "Well, the officers ought to be trained to use softer skills," but they probably are trained in those things, it's just that there isn't the transparency, so that the community doesn't know what, what's going on. And I think that's something that, that has been, been in place a long time, it's, it's part of the culture, and I don't know that it's been thought about, but I think it's something that we should insist on.
Okay. Well, since Councilmember Schultz moved us in that direction, why don't we go there and talk a little bit more about the role of the chief's advisory committee, moving, I think, for me, if, I know there have been some issues possibly in the past, but really thinking about moving forward, and what we want to see in the future? You know, if there are some changes, or what role people see for a chief's advisory committee? Is there a role for a committee? Is there a role for a committee? And some kind of commission as we're moving forward? So, if folks had thoughts on that?
Yeah.
So I've been on the board since 2011, and I know in 2012- So, I've been on the board since 2011, and I know in 2012, Chief Rakucci really wanted us to do a presentation for the board, because there were questions about what we do, and is it helpful? And so, I know the two of us spoke to council in spring of 2012, I was one of the two. We had a list of questions that all of the board members answered, like, "What have you done? And what have you gained? And what has your community gained?" I think the biggest impact I've had on the board, and the way that I've been most helpful to my community, is for some reason, some people are just very averse to have communication directly with the police department. So, this neighbor hasn't shoveled their snow for two weeks, can you call the police department and let them know, because I don't want to do it? Or, this car hasn't moved for three weeks, can you call? Or, those types of things. We need more stop sign enforcement. You know, can you be the conduit of communication? That's the role that I've played the most, and it's very helpful. There are still a lot of people who just, for whatever reason, don't want to have that direct communication. And I think as many ways as we can give people to reach the police department, we should have.
Sounds almost like a council member.
Like a liaison.
I know.
I try to take some of the stress off of Tim when I came in.
I also see that as an opportunity, not only to serve as a conduit of inquiries or requests for services, but also as a linkage between you all as chief's advisory committee members and the police department. You can say, you know, "Sure, I'd be happy to ask this question on your behalf. How about I copy you on the email, and then I can introduce you to, you know, the person who I send these questions to, and then you can develop a relationship that way, too."
Yeah, absolutely. And like David said, we also have the opportunity to take things back. So, when people are not locking their cars, and I know Kathy's sending out things and drilling it and drilling it, but I also have the opportunity to talk to people and reinforce it, so they hear it from me as well.
In a different way than staff can often communicate certain things.
And I can reach more people, maybe, than just an email.
It's been a couple years, a couple chiefs, since I've been on the committee. I think its lack of formality is actually an asset that I will be careful about protecting, because I think the more formal it becomes, you lose some of this ability to have it. I think it just, again, puts blockages in front of that communication that I think exists. Because it's not part of the council, because it's not any kind of oversight mechanism, it's just a communication mechanism.
I'd just like to voice the opposing opinion on that. I think that it should be appointed by the council, and provide reports to the council, and get some direction from the council.
Well, I think that's an interesting point, too, because I think there's, as something we could discuss tonight and into the future, is a chief's advisory committee, and then maybe something like a commission, that is more directed by the council, that I think, Chief Magnus didn't say this exactly, but when he was answering the question on accreditation, but maybe a more formal committee that takes on the role of understanding trainings and other types of procedures, that is reporting back to the council. I've equated this in my own mind to how we have a pension board in the city, and those are residents who either already have expertise, or when, once they get on the pension board, obtain that expertise to provide feedback to the council on those things. And so, one of the things is, you know, do we keep the chief advisory board, as Sean said, in a less, maybe, formal role, having the communications, as people have talked about? And then, is there a need or a role for something that's more of a committee that reports back to council, and is looking at things like training and other procedures in the department?
I think you all need to know what your information needs are, so you can appropriately oversee that part of the government, like you do anything else. I just wanted to articulate the view that I do think if you make it more formal, you give something.
Yeah. Yeah. Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Kovar, and then we'll go back over here.
Okay. I would like to hear from Ms. Lopez, since she was, worked for the DOJ, whether or not she thinks that there would be some value to an oversight commission that reported directly to the council.
So, I have thought for a while, I've been on the chief's advisory committee for a while, and the way I would recommend approaching this question generally, is to figure out what the city needs, and that it's going to require talking with the police department, with the council, with community members, and then deciding what entities you need, how many of them, and what they're called, and what they do, based on that. Otherwise, it's a little bit of tail wagging the dog, right? We have a chief's advisory committee that we may or may not want to go that way in the future, but we shouldn't say, "Oh, well, we have a chief's advisory committee, how should we use it?" That's backwards, in my view. The way that it was started by Chief Rakucci, like, chief's advisory boards across the country, as a way for the chief to make sure he was hearing from different segments of the community. My concern with it, that I share with many people here, is that it was never broadly representative of the entire community. And so, it didn't ever serve, it was a very, it served that purpose in a very haphazard sort of incomplete way. It is a, but that doesn't mean that that idea isn't a good idea, and I think there are things you could do if you wanted to make that a more, you know, an efficient way for the chief to hear directly from different segments of the community, you could certainly do that. A commission, in my view, I actually think is something worth considering, for sure, because, for the reasons that Chief Magnus was saying, that you always have to be thinking, you can't ever be, you always have to be learning about what is going on in your community. And I would think that, you know, the city council, you know, you guys have a lot of things on your plate. It is, it's a part-time job, you may or may not have expertise or interest, particularly in the police department, but you do have, there are people in this community who have interest and expertise, and they, working with the police department, I think, could be, they could be a resource for the police department, but also for the community. To, and how exactly the city decides to use a commission like that could be, is up to the city, but I, the way, some of the things I've, some of the things I've seen used successfully in other places are just things like where there's a new initiative that the department is starting, or new type of training that they want to undertake. And you have questions about it, it sounds like a really good idea, a really bad idea, but you're not sure. You could, a commission with maybe some expertise, or just some time, willing to devote some time, can work with the department to figure out more, to learn more about that, and is this something we want to do? If there's a new, you know, just for example, when the PD adopted tasers, Chief Rakucci and one of the captains had me review their taser policies. And it was actually a wonderful experience for me, because I'm used to reviewing policies, and you go in, and they say, "Oh, you're crazy, these are stupid recommendations, well, we're never going to do this, it'll get people killed." And it was wonderful, because I went in, and I had my comments on their policies, and I was like, "Okay, here's my comments." And they're like, you know, I actually emailed them ahead of time, and I went in to meet with them, and the chief and the captain were like, "Oh, we appreciate this so much, it's so helpful, here's the changes we made." And it was, it made you realize that when you're working with a department that's actually interested in engaging, you can actually add value to those sorts of, that sort of dialogue, that everybody feels good about at the end of the process. So, I would think that a commission might give a little more transparency to some of what's going on in the police department, and a little assurance that there are some community values and judgments being inserted into that process, so that the, so that the police department is attuned to what those values and judgments are, and those decisions are made a little bit more broadly than just within the police department, without putting all of that on the council, which I think can be kind of a lot to ask.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thanks. I'd be interested in hearing from other members of the committee about this specific question of how you get on there, because most of our committees, you know, we appoint them, and I don't think we necessarily get the, as broad a representation as we would want, we've talked some about that, and I think there, we're making progress with this more there. But, how did it feel to be chosen by the chief, and what was that process like? And what would you suggest, if that was going to continue, or if it was going to be changed in some way, to find a way to attract or engage other parts of the community that aren't necessarily, and this is only some of you all, that aren't necessarily represented? I mean, should there be more people who speak other languages? Just any comments on those things?
I'd be glad to respond. I thought it was bizarre that I was appointed to the committee, or chosen, because I was, you know, active in the ACLU, and I was actually glad that the chief seemed to be open to having, you know, diverse opinions. But I was very frustrated as a member of the committee, partly for what he was saying, because we, and what Councilmember Schultz was saying, there was no feedback, no required feedback, so that whatever we did at the meetings just seemed to stay there. I can't say that I was great at trying to transmit information out, but I wanted to have meetings, minutes taken, of, because there was actually some useful information that would come out of the meeting. The chief would explain what we would, what he was doing, and what the department was doing in different areas, whether it was the inter-jurisdictional agreements, which I kept pushing, "Why aren't these things? We've been waiting for years, where are these agreements?" And it was like talking, you know, and chief would kind of give us an answer, but we, since we didn't have minutes, and we didn't have a lot of information coming out, things just would repeat the same thing over and over. "Why are there so many apps, you know, vacancies in the department, what's being done to fill it?" And it seemed, it was a very frustrating experience, to be honest. At the same time, there was a lot of, there was give and take. You heard from members of the committee about what was, we're telling the chief what was happening in different sectors of the community. It wasn't as representative as it should have been. Certainly, that would have been much better if we had a broader representation from different segments of the community. You know, from thinking of people, we're kind of the high-crime areas in the city. I don't think we heard much from those areas. So, you know, what you were saying about the commission, Kristy, I think that would be much better, if it were not a handpicked committee by the chief, but something that was kind of meant to be more representative of the community deliberately, and with a formal set of agendas. We never had an agenda at any meeting, which, at some points, you could say is positive, because people said, well, it was on their mind, but there was no, there was very little structure to it. So, overall, I would say, the needs of the city are to, which, we are right, I mean, we start with where, what does the city need? And my sense is the city needs, you know, that the department needs some oversight, for good and for bad. I mean, the good things need to come out, but you need to deal with, for example, the incentives that we've been talking about, how are police evaluated? I mean, we've never heard much about that. So, there's, there would be a great need for a commission, perhaps also a role for a committee, so the chief can get his own feedback. That could be useful as well.
So, perhaps my differing view comes from my naive taking of the name of it quite literally, right? I mean, I never had any delusion that there was any oversight involved, right? It said, "Chief's Advisory," I can remember, I mean, I may have been when Bruce was my council member, who said, "Hey, would you do this?" And I said, "Sure." So, that was the, that was the extent of it, so.
Yeah, my intention was to have more oversight, and I found it very frustrating.
And I think that, I think you're seeing that there's confusion about that.
Yes, right.
David, did you want to add something?
Yeah, just that I think, just from my own professional experience as a bureaucrat, I have two workgroups, when one workgroup will do, I just feel like there's a certain amount of just adding complexity, and if one workgroup has a formal role, and the other one doesn't have a formal role, then what's that other workgroup that doesn't have a formal role? What are they going to feel like? I just, that would be my preference. And then, you know, I do think it was a little bit haphazard, the search process, I just responded to an email, I said, "I want to get involved in my new community, I just bought a house here." And on the list serve popped up an email saying, "Do you want to be on the police advisory board?" I said, "I did some criminal justice work, I could do that." And I responded, and I got on the committee. So, it wasn't a very systematic process, and so, having some kind of systematic process that especially got to this representation issue, I think would be great. But that's, but that's.
So, I agree with that bureaucratic point, and I'm all about less process, not more, when you can do it. But I would point out that it is not at all unusual in communities to have two or three or four forms of community involvement or interaction with police departments. And I think, but it's a very good point, if you're going to do that, you need to be very clear about what, who's, you know, what the different roles of each of those groups are. And I think you've heard today, part of the problem here was that it was one group trying to be lots of different things, right? I think, in my view, a chief's advisory committee is the chief's, and the chief should be the one who drives what that is made up. And I think one of the problems with it in recent years has been that this chief didn't start it, probably would not have started it, frankly, and so, was always sort of half-hearted about it. And so, if the council in this community thinks it's important for the chief to have that sort of direct input from people, they need to make sure the new chief understands that before the new chief comes on, but then it really has to be the chief's. And I do think, though, that you can put some parameters on that. For example, I think that the background check requirement to be on the chief's advisory committee is ridiculous, and that should go away. And I also think that, that there should be more affirmative outreach to broader segments of the community, so that the chief, you know, it's not just going and asking, you know, putting out something on the email list server, or asking, you know, "Who wants to be on this?" It's going to communities where you know you're not hearing from people, from those segments of Tacoma, and identifying people, you know, "We want you, you know, we want, do you come, you know, sit on this?" And then making clear what the roles are. And I, and I think that if you're clear about what that role is, you know, different people have different desire to be involved in different ways, right? Some people just want to be that conduit between their neighborhood, or their community, and the police department. Other people don't really want to do that role so much, and want to do this other role that we're talking about right now in the form of a commission. It's okay to have those different forms, and many, many communities have those different forms of involvement and engagement, and as long as you're clear about it, it can work quite well, I think.
Great. Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah. I found myself being a little amused by some of the comments I've just heard, because it brought back immediately my time on the Public Citizens, Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee, PSCAC, as it was called, that I served on for four years before I had the chance to run for the city council. And during that time, and this was a city council-appointed committee that no longer exists, we did the right thing in putting it out of its misery. And, but, I attended, I joined it because I was working at the time, I thought I wanted to get involved in doing something with the city, and I thought, "Let me do something that I know the least about, because that'll be really interesting, I'll learn stuff." And I spent four years on that committee, trying to learn something. And I, it was poorly led, and they continued to argue about the fact that the city council has never given us any direction as to what we should be doing. And so, there was a lot of very bright people on that committee, but they all had their area of expertise, and others had their area of feeling like, "Well, what it is, should we be talking?" I mean, one man was, talked strongly about the need to talk about the issues related to marijuana, and trying to make that, those problems go away. And others weren't interested in that. And so, it just was chaos, and it was too much informality. And I, it became very apparent that it was not really accomplishing anything. And the police chief would be there at each of the meetings, or in her absence, I think we started with Chief Karim at the time, or one of the, or the deputy chief, and they'd answer questions, and it was interesting to learn, to hear that, but we never really accomplished anything. So, I say that, I started out saying, it's kind of amusing because of the familiarity. So, I think if we're going to go in that direction with maybe a chief's advisory committee, we need to be really clear about what it's, what we have expectations of. I mean, you can overdo informality too much, and people need structure, and they need, they need to know what it is that's expected of them, and I think we'd have that responsibility, notwithstanding whether there's a commission or not.
Councilmember Marilyn.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a couple of thoughts. I mean, by simply having it, calling it a committee or a commission, 80 percent of the people in the city won't participate, period. They don't join committees or commissions in their day job, but they can avoid it. They don't join the PTA. Like, that's not their thing, that's not a fault. So, we really have to realize that that's a, that having a sustained engagement where you know you're going to have to come to meetings for a couple of hours, month after month, like, that's just not going to work for people. We can do things to change the percent of the community that would come in, so, for example, if we had free food and free babysitting for anyone who joined, and we'll provide a takeout box for your family on the way home, you would get some different people who would volunteer to come to a meeting once a month, if that were the, that were a plus that came with it. And there's a dozen other ways we could try to get different people in. And my thoughts in terms of the advisory committee and the police commission, I like the way the city has used task forces in the past, a limited period of time where you've got a specific charge, so one of the things we've talked about tonight is what is community policing or community-led policing? So, that's an example where, where to Ms. Lopez's point, we could bring in some expertise and say, we want you to work with the new chief specifically on this question, while the advisory committee continues to have a broader, a broader role in advising and helping the chief on anything that comes up. But it could also be that we're more concerned about response to complaints, right? So, we really want to have a handle on response to complaints. That's something more like the, that, the way we manage tenant issues. We've got a formal body. There's a complaint that comes in, it goes to the city manager, it goes to the police chief, wherever it goes, but it, it has this other sort of process that might involve confidentiality. It might, there might be some background check issues there. I don't know. But like, that would be a very different thing, but it would, it would serve a really clear purpose. So, I guess, I, I just think in terms of the, the fact that we'll have a new police chief, one way or another, we as the council should think about, you know, what is the specific thing that we really want to try to help the new chief get right? And then the last thing I'd add is, I'm not sure the council is the right body to which a commission should report, or the advisory committee. Unless we change some other things, it may be the best place to have a second body report is to the city manager. So, what does the city manager need to hear from residents in order to get the kind of, you know, policing we want? I don't know the answer to that question, but that's a really important part of the process, because the city council does not see the police chief, you know, very often, and does not supervise the police chief, does not meet with officers by nature of our charter. And so, city manager does. And so, maybe that's the place to, to really spend some time. And again, it depends, my answer would be different depending on the questions that we're trying to get the commission or the advisory committee to, to work on.
Mr. Kudin.
Yeah, sort of building on that, I think that the idea of the commission or task forces that are addressing some of the specific issues we've talked about or addressing problems, we've talked a lot about community member participation, which I think is crucial and real diverse community member participation. But I also think in doing that problem solving, it's worth thinking about putting officers of different rank in that conversation as well. So, I think we're talking a lot about groups that would advise the chief, or groups that might advise the council or the city manager. But the, the dialogue and the problem solving that happens when officers, sergeants, captains, and residents are coming together to learn about each other's perspective and build the policies together, the policies that come out of that are much more effective. And the learning that comes out of that has the, also built, we're talking a lot about build relationships by walking, you know, get out of your car, walk down the street. But the relationships that get built when people solve a real problem together are even stronger. And so, I think it's worth in thinking about the various configurations, thinking about, and maybe, that may be an easier thing to do if they're definitive task forces that have their task and then they're done, you know, and these two officers are on that one, and then a different set of officers are on another one. But really thinking about how to have, and, and not rotating officers, you know, one comes to this meeting and another comes to another meeting, but that the officers, residents, the same ones together solve, you know, solving problems, I think is a real valuable approach.
I, I think that's a, a really excellent point. If you're, especially if you're, if you're thinking about the commission type of idea, I think officer participation is absolutely vital to that. And Seattle has a commission that has, that, it's a community commission. It, there is a lot of contention there, and they put an officer on their commission. And the community members were convinced it was never going to work. And it has, they now, it has worked amazingly. They've come out with some of the most progressive use of force policies and training in the country. And that officer who was on that committee was just elected president of the police union in Seattle. So, it can work both ways. And Seattle is, you know, a, a special community, but it's, it, no more than Tacoma in that way, right? That kind of thing where it is really possible and valuable if you can bring officers and community members together to work on those sorts of things.
Great. All right. Well, as I said at the beginning, I didn't think we were going to come to any conclusion on any of these points. So, given the hour, why don't we move down to the process for police chief recruitment? And I'll just say, at the outset, just to remind folks that we had this meeting tonight. On Wednesday evening, we have a public hearing, so members of the public can come, talk about characteristics they'd like to see in a police chief. The survey just went out today, so if people would like to take part in the survey, it's on the website. Spread that around the neighborhood. Members of the police department have already taken the survey. So, that's another place where we're getting feedback. And the other thing is that, and this is in the, the planning process, is specifically to have a group with young people and to get their feedback on the next chief and the characteristics they'd like to see. And then we have another meeting, similar to this one, scheduled for June, not, not January, June 29th. And at that meeting, we want to come to kind of some closure on the process for selecting the police chief and characteristics for a chief. So, that's where we're going over the next couple of weeks, with the goal of sending out an announcement in July, end of July? I'm looking at the acting city manager.
The sooner the better. We've got an RFP out right now for a recruitment firm, and the submissions are due July 7th, so it'll depend on how quickly we can make a selection for a firm and start working with them.
And one of the things that we wanted to discuss this evening was, you know, the role of council, but then also of community members in that recruitment process. Council has already begun the conversation and thinking about, and talking about how we would like to be involved in that process. And so, I just want to open it up for a number of minutes here to continue that conversation.
Yes, thank you.
Yes. So, are we doing formal? Are we doing formal, informal, first name, last name?
Formal's fine, yeah.
I'm just, I was a little bit jealous. I was a little bit jealous that she got to be.
Ms. Charcutian, I'm sorry.
Yes, Ms. Charcutian. I mean, like, I just, I've got a PhD doctor.
Dr., please. A doctor. Soletta, sorry.
So, no, you know, I was involved on the city manager selection task force, and it kind of felt like an exercise in, you know, we went through this deliberative process. And at the end of the day, council kind of picked who they were wanting, wanted to pick, right? So, if that's, if that's your intention, then I think that you guys should just do that and not, I don't think the illusion of public participation is, is necessary because we've delegated our authority to you as our council members in, in elections, right? So, if, if, if the plan is for you guys to make the call, then I think you guys and gals should just make the call, and that's, and that's okay. If the alternative is that we're advising the city manager on, you know, her selection of her subordinate, then that's a different, equally valid approach. But I think that ultimately, you're going to set the tone, and, and that, that's, I, I don't think that the, I, I would rather have that honesty, or not honesty, but just that transparency upfront, I think is better than going through an exercise of, here's some, you know, perception of public input, but at the end of the day, it's, it's council's call, so.
Thank you.
Is that not a charter question?
No, the city manager hires the police chief. But the question is, at the moment, the council has discussed prior to this evening that we would like some input into that decision and be part of that process. And so, some of the things, and have the community part of that process as well. And so, some things like holding these additional meetings, having the survey go out, the public hearing, those were some of the, the easier things that we could put in place. And as we move forward in the selection process, those are the things that we'll be having to discuss. What I've asked the acting city manager to do is to take the feedback. He's been receiving for us, work with our city attorney, and then propose a process moving forward. And that's what we'll discuss on the 29th. Whether or not ultimately, we will need a charter change to have the council involved in that process is something we're still figuring out.
That's a big thing.
It is.
But I, I mean, it's important, right? Is the chief going to report to the council or the city manager?
Well, there's actually two separate things. So, so, so it's actually, I was responding to Sean's question on the process of selecting the chief and not who the chief is going to report to. So, even on how we do the process of selecting the chief, depending on the level of involvement with the council, that may necessitate a charter change. We're not sure yet. The issue of who the chief would report to, at the moment, unless somebody wanted to explore the option of a charter change, the chief would continue to report to the city manager. So, those are two separate charter changes.
So, so not having paid a lot of attention to the specifics here, I would just say that I think foundational documents like constitutions and bylaws and charters exist for a reason, so you don't make short-term emotional decisions. And I would just issue that reminder.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a reason we don't trust the city manager to make that? That's what it, so, from just average citizen, it feels like that changes, well, we don't really trust the city manager to make that choice. And I would just be careful of how that messaging might go out, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Mail, councilmember Seaman.
Yeah, I'll just weigh in. I support changing the charter before we make a hiring decision for the police chief, to give the council a role basically like advising consent, not that the police chief would report to council, or that the council would run the selection process the way we ran the city manager selection process, which in the charter is the way that the city manager is selected. And I say that partly based on experience with the last two police chiefs, that I think if we had a different process, we could have had more buy-in with the chiefs and potentially more, and better, better knowledge of experience with chiefs from the, from the beginning. And potentially, there would have been better candidates. Now, I don't know that because, of course, we didn't see any of the resumes or finalists or anything like that. So, I believe that, given the size of our police department and the importance of this issue, all the issues we talked about tonight, that having a minimal council role in that process is valuable. It would build support and accountability for me as a council member if I had played a role in that process.
Councilmember Seaman.
Thank you, Mayor. And I can't answer for my colleagues, but for myself, I've been on the council a number of years and have developed over those years a strong feeling that the council should have a role in the hiring. I've been disappointed with some of the selections that have been made in the past, and very disappointed that some of those had absolutely no input from the council. And so, I think it's a, a process change that, that needs to be made. But I, in that with not changing the, the charter to actually manage the, the police chief, but to at least participate in the selection process.
Councilmember Michelle.
It's, it's a gray area when you talk about being able to quote, participate in the selection process. Where do you draw the line? And I worry, and I don't know where you draw the line. I think that has to do a lot with the, the city manager that we have hired to be our city manager, and to the extent that, as Mr. Soletta said, that we trust her to be able to understand the will of the seven council members and to implement that. I think she's fully capable of doing that. I believe that whoever selects, regardless of who you say the chief reports to, whoever selects that chief is ultimately the person the chief is going to answer to. The charter can say, oh, the chief's supposed to report to the city manager. She has complete control to hire and fire. But if we are the ones that actually pick the, that person, the charter isn't going to mean anything. You can't have it both ways. There can't be two, 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 two different entities that are saying, oh, no, it's our responsibility to select the chief. I'm greatly in favor of, of our having an influence, and that's what we're doing here, where we're trying to pull it in and spread that out to as many residents as we possibly can. You're being the, the vanguard of that here because of your familiarity with the, the workings of the police department. And you're already filling our heads with ideas about how we want to go in that respect. And with the survey and the other sources of input, I think, just, just listening to, to, to our guest speaker here tonight was terrifically helping, helpful to me to know the kind of questions that I would want to ask if I were in an interview. And I know that those are the kind of questions that our city manager, when she returns, will be asking, because we'll make sure she does. That's, that's, I think that's our job as the city council.
Councilmember McCollough.
Thank you, Mayor. I think there's a few levels to this, and having all the input from the members of the committee is really helpful. I don't think that there's any problem whatsoever with us saying, here are what we think based on what we hear from the community. Here are the characteristics and the sort of thematic things we want the new chief to have, because those are policy questions. And we have, obviously, under the existing charter, we have the right to, and the ability to set the charter, to, to set the policy. As to whether there should be a change in the charter, I haven't made up my mind yet. But I would say that we can have, if we do change the charter, we can have input into the hiring without necessarily being responsible for day-to-day management, which I would not want to do, or even having firing authority, because, you know, if you think about the way the federal government works, the person in charge, who in that case would be the, in this case, would be the city manager, puts forward a name to run a department, and there's his body, we're not the US Senate, but there's his body that then says yes or no about that. Whichever they say, they don't get to fire that person later on. If, if they don't like them, that authority still lies with the executive who appointed them. So, I think there's sort of middle grounds that we can think about. And I haven't, well, thought about enough, or I'm smart enough, got to figure out what makes the most sense. But I definitely think we set the policy, and I'd be open to us being involved in either reviewing the top candidates and potentially having a advising consent. I'm not sure exactly if that's what councilmember Mail was talking about. But I, I think there's room within that for a number of different ways to approach it.
I just wanted to bring up an anecdote that I think, I, I do think having some council role in this is important. There was an incident where a man was assaulted in our ward, and I pulled together a community meeting, and we discussed it. We tried to bring in the police chief to, with our council member at the time, which was Bridget Peter, to, to, to meet about this. And, you know, we, I emailed him probably seven times and never got a response. And I would appreciate it if he felt a need to respond to council members and, or who the, she, maybe, if the new police chief is a woman, you know, that, I think that is important, that there is a accountability to all the wards, and it's not just reporting up to a centralized structure. And I, I think that having that relationship from the start with the police chief would be a good thing.
So, I, if I could just hang out, I had a very similar, well, not very similar, but I proposed a member for the police chief's advisory commission, and I had emailed the chief seven times, as well as Kathy, and then I emailed Suzie. And after the very first email with Suzie, I had like a response that afternoon. So, I think she's very, I don't know, very effective at that in all things, whether it be snow or crime or what have you. I, you know, if you make the call to her, she gets it done, so.
Quick point. I think that regardless of this charter issue, from my perspective, the criteria that we'd put in any hiring notice, any solicitation for candidates would be the same. So, we want the same chief with the same skill sets and the same issues that we've talked about tonight, whether that's directly hired by the city manager with no input from council, or hired by the city manager with some advising consent by council, I guess. To me, it seems like it's the same kind of candidates we want. It's.
You don't think the response might be different?
It might be a little bit different.
I might look at it differently based on that criteria.
I mean, our, our guest tonight spoke about his example of being hired by a city council with opposition from the police union. So, you might get different candidates.
Yeah, you might be able to overlook a city manager you didn't like if you thought you were a board member.
Yes.
For the ward members that were on the board, on the council, when the last chief was hired, could you just give us an idea of what input you had then? Did you not have any?
No, there was no input.
No.
It was, yeah.
Who was the city manager that hired?
Well, it was Barb Matthews, but this, the, well, it was an odd situation. The chief was hired a few days before leaving, so.
She had announced her resignation in the spring, but, and that was going to. She had announced her resignation in the spring, but, and that was going, scheduled for September, I think, and one of the very last things that she did was select the chief, and she was gone before he started work. And Barbara Matthews was to become candid about it, a person who kept her decision-making very close to her chest.
If, if I, I was first elected, Barb was about to leave, and I asked her in a meeting about the candidates for chief, and she completely dismissed me, because, you know, that's what the charter says. She has the right to hire the police chief, and discussing it with me was not something that she had to do.
So I think one of the things we, the conversations we've had, as you can tell from this evening and talking with the acting city manager, is depending on, on how we put together this process and the proposal we'll get and discuss in more detail, that some more level of involvement than that is absolutely necessary. But where, what does that include, and whether it necessitates a charter change, is what we're still figuring out. Steve, and then councilmember Simmons.
Yeah, it seems inconceivable that the council couldn't have a role in selecting someone who's so central to the kind of fate of the city. So I think Tim's idea, councilmember Mail's idea about the, you know, that advising consent, or I think Peter was saying the same thing, you know? It make, would make a lot of sense. You'd have a, a buy-in, and, and then you'd also have a responsibility, if things went south, to do something.
That's true.
You know?
Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you. Back to Dr. Siletta's point, and this is not, this is not a, just an impulsive reaction on my part. It's a broken part of, of the process, I think, something that, you know, we see a problem, we should fix it, we shouldn't just try to say, well, the city manager this time is agreeable with us, so, you know, this has been a problem in the past, we've seen it a couple of times since I've been on the council, where it really didn't work at all, and I think we need to fix it. And I, and I, it needs to be a charter change, because it needs to be clear that we need to have at least some influence on that.
All right. It's a quarter to ten. We're a little late, but I want to thank you all very, very much, not just for this evening, but for all the input you've given, for serving on the committee. I know that it hasn't always been smooth and clear, but we appreciate you doing that. And for folks who have helped us out with our youth dialogues and other things as we work through this process, we very much appreciate being able to tap into your expertise and your experiences. And this is going to continue, so.
Please don't stop now.
No. And we hope you can come back on the 29th, but if you cannot, or if you have thoughts between now and then, please send us emails on this as we work through it. So, thank you. Thanks.[1784.41]